Do you have a cellphone? Please turn it off. And we'll call this meeting to order. And we'll start with a moment of silence to be observed, please. Thank you. Pledge allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Barnes.
Here.
Reed.
Brown.
Here.
Kraus.
Here.
French.
Here.
And Mayor Domingo.
Here. Thank you. Mayor and councilmembers' comments. Are there any councilmembers? Yes, Cheryl.
I have two things. On May the 11th, at 2:15 PM, in front of the community school will be the Arbor Day celebration. They're planning to plant a tree and some other festivities. Everyone is invited to be there. I'm sure they would love it if people came. So that's on the 11th at 2:15 in the afternoon. And then yesterday, or over the weekend, the Ismond House was notified that they are being funded for the grant that they had requested from the Michigan Heritage Restoration Project. And what will end up happening is with the money, they'll be able to finish the second and third floors of the Ismond House. And so it will be a fully functional building. So it may take a little bit of time still to get that all worked out, but we got the money.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Great. Anyone else? Yes, Andy.
Thank you, Mayor. This Saturday is Albion College's commencement. And our guest speaker, our commencement speaker is the Reverend Faith Fowler from the Cass Community Church in Detroit. Faith Fowler is a 1971, I believe, alumni of Albion College. And so she will be talking about her connection to her community and how perhaps that can help us as Albion College connects itself to our community of Albion. So outdoor ceremony is free to the public. Indoor ceremony is free to the public, but you've got to call the college to get tickets. Space is limited in the Dow Center. But we're keeping our fingers crossed for sunny weather on Saturday. Thank you.
You're welcome. Anyone else?
Oh, in addition to that, there's a community member. There we go.
Okay, okay.
There we go. There's also a community person, a community member receiving honorary doctorate.
That's correct. Go for it.
So Mr. Harry Bonner will be receiving honorary doctorate from Albion College on Saturday.
Great. Yes.
Speaking of that, a group of us from the council and from Albion went to Detroit on last Thursday to watch Dr. Cheryl Mitchell get the Wonder Woman's award. We'll probably read about it in the paper this Thursday. And if you could have heard the glowing thing she said about Albion, it made you very proud that you lived here. So that was, it was very nice. And another thing, too, the people who are here, not just precinct two, but thank you for participating in the town halls that we've had. I've heard a lot of people talk about how informational they were, how they enjoyed them, and wishing that we would do them again, but not so long each time. But I thought they were good, too.
Great. Okay. I have just one announcement about our cemetery. They're working diligently on getting that cleaned up and everything else for Memorial Day. But there's been mailboxes placed out there that have the cemetery rules and regulations in it. If you spend any time in the cemetery at all, please grab one of those. Because with one person running that, he doesn't have time to do everything that needs to be done. So follow the rules. If you don't, don't complain if something comes up missing that was put there that wasn't supposed to be. Because it's very, very difficult for him to manage 50 acres by himself. So please follow the rules, and that'll make things a lot better. Thank you. If there is no more, we'll move on to presentations. And we'll start with the French students with the French market from Mary Slater.
While they're gathering up here, I would just like to bring to everybody's attention again and remind us what a unique and wonderful organization we have with our sister city relationship with Noisy de la Reine by France. And lots of cities have those signs that say Sister City with somebody or other. But ours is really special and unique because we have hundreds of people back in Portland every year. We've just had a team of basketball players. We've just had a team of basketball players here. And now we have these young middle school students. Soon we're going to be having some kids, younger kids for summer dreams. We're going to have some older young adults doing internships here in Albion. And we are just so grateful to have this relationship and to welcome these students here. There are 15 students, and there are two teachers. And they, since they've been here, they have been to Parma School, to Albion School, to Marley School. They've been to the Binder Park Zoo. They've been to Cascades. They've been to the Ice Cream Parlor. And you know what they say? Albion is best. And just also want to bring to your attention, everybody, that French Market is on March 16th combined with Albion Week combined with, I'm sorry, May. We're in May. Okay. May 16th combined with Albion Week combined with the Farmer's Market. And the French Market is based on this wonderful market that you all have in Noisy de la Reine where they sell fruits and vegetables and meats and clothing and all kinds of wonderful crafts and things. So we've modeled, you have it every week. We have it once a year. So we want to welcome all of you, and we're so grateful to have you here.
Thank you.
Would they like to introduce themselves?
Oh, sure. Would you like to know their names? Yes, okay. Why don't you just start here and speak your name into the microphone? Just your name, that's all.
My name is Charlotte.
Kami.
My name is Morgan.
Wendy.
Evelyn.
My name is Elia.
Cora Lee.
I am Anael.
My name is Lola.
My name is Mary.
My name is Matthew.
My name is Valentine.
My name is Louise.
Would the two teachers, would you like to just introduce yourselves and maybe say a word about your visit here?
Okay. Good evening. My name is Amelie Bousquet.
And my name is Clarice Arnold, and I am a chemistry teacher. So excuse me for my previous English.
And we are very happy to be here with you, and thank you so much for welcoming us here. We had the best time ever. And if you need any teachers, especially a physics teacher and an English as a second language teacher, we'll be happy to come back and help you. Thank you.
Did you get what you needed?
Thank you all.
Thanks, Mary.
Mary? Hold it for a minute.
Oh, wait, wait, wait. Picture.
If you'd all turn around and look back up this way, please.
Smile. Say cheese. Matthew's got the best deal. I want to say thank you so much to the Albion families who've adopted our French students this week. Without your support, this doesn't happen. So for all the families who've mentored or taken in as house families, host families for these kids, I really appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Next, we have a proclamation for National Day of Prayer for May 7th, 2015. National Day of Prayer, May 7th, 2015. Whereas National Day of Prayer is in the spirit of unity and reflection for those who came before us, and whereas we each give thanks for the courage and the compassion shown by so many in this country and around the world. And whereas the City of Albion is holding the National Day of Prayer on the front steps of City Hall on Thursday, May 7th, 2015. And whereas the Albion City Council recognizes the National Day of Prayer as a coming together of peace and goodwill. Now therefore, I, Joe Domingo, Mayor of City of Albion, do hereby proclaim May 7th, 2015, as National Day of Prayer in the City of Albion. Thank you, sir. Steve, is there anything you would like to say, sir?
We just want to thank the city for allowing us to use the steps on that day. And we want to invite everybody to be with us for that day.
What time?
The thing I didn't see was what time.
12 noon.
12 noon, that's what I thought. Okay? Thanks again. Budget update. Property tax decline. Tom Mead, Finance Director.
Tom Mead, Finance Director. As far as the budget update, I guess you guys have it in your packets. I'll be happy to answer questions if you have any specific ones. But what I primarily wanted to bring to your attention is right immediately behind that in the packet was this sheet labeled taxable value declining. What has happened, just quick background on the timing of things. When the March Board of Review is complete, that's when the assessing department finalizes the role for the upcoming year. So from the assessing point of view, that's kind of like their final numbers. But from our point of view, from the finance department, when we bill the taxes, that's our original role. That's the number we're going to start with when the June tax bills go out. And of course, there'll be adjustments, or could potentially be adjustments throughout the year for our July Board of Review and December Board of Review and tribunals, et cetera. So looking at 2015 original roll, it's not real good. Unfortunately, it dropped to 3.5 million citywide. The impact that has on general fund, as you can see in the box down below, for operating, it's going to affect us about $42,700, a little bit more for ad fee because the administration fee is 1% on the entire, everything billed. So it'll be, it affects that a little bit as well. And you can see going down through recreation, about 5,300. Solid Waste, 7,100. Debt Service Fund, 4,600. Street Improvement Fund, 10,700. Total citywide, about $72,400. And while our taxable values quit declining, I wish I knew. So, any questions?
No, it's just tough.
Wish I had good news, guys.
Yeah.
It is what it is on that.
It is what it is.
It is what it is.
Yeah. Thank you, Tom.
All we can do is have more people move in, start paying property tax.
Yeah, exactly.
That's true.
Thank you.
Thanks, Tom.
Neighborhood health visitors, Tom Brown. And Tom Brown.
Hello.
Hello. We're happy to come to your house today. I'm Tom Brown.
And likewise, I'm Tom Brown.
Well, he's Tom Brown South. I'm Tom Brown North. We're here to make a visit at your house and bring you some information and some gifts. And we're not selling anything. And we're happy to share with you this information. This is about the projects that are available for people's health in this area. And I looked at copies at your house once, but here's a new one. Still hanging on the refrigerator. And there are copies for members of the council as well. This describes the various programs we have in the area. It tells, tell you how to access health care in the larger communities. And we want everyone to be able to access health care easily and have this opportunity. We also have some gifts for you. And Tom will tell you about those. For your cooperation today in answering the few questions that we have, that Tom will get to in a few minutes, we have some free gifts. Again, we're not selling anything. You'll get a digital thermometer.
Hand him one. And a smoke detector.
Digital thermometer. And we suggest if you have any mercury thermometers, that you probably dispose of those and use this style. And we also have a smoke alarm that we're sure you'll find useful in your house. And as I said, that's simply for, just taking the time to answer a few questions. All the questions are perfectly confidential. There's no names taken. Tom will proceed with those. This is general information we're gathering for the Health Department. And we ask us at every house, how many live in this house? Do you have health insurance? Do you have insurance for a doctor? Do you have a family doctor? And do you have dental insurance? And finally, would you like to be a neighborhood health visitor, too? Yourself, right in your neighborhood? We can use help. Yeah. Will the people in the audience who are neighborhood health visitors raise your hands, please? One, two, three, four. There were a couple of others earlier. So far, we have about 150 people who have volunteered to be neighborhood health visitors. Many of them are college students from Albion College. Others are many people from the community. And we have one, two, two who have volunteered already on this council, sitting right here. And we have other information. This is a report which we gave to various organizations in the area to describe to them how we're doing. If you really need any help, if you'd like to be a neighborhood health visitor in your neighborhood, or if you'd like to be a neighborhood health visitor in your neighborhood, you have the information. Our names are on the back. Medea Wolf is the director of this now. Joyce Spicer was the original director. Are there any questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Tom and Tom.
Tom North and Tom South. Citizens' comments. Persons addressing the City Council shall limit their comments to agenda items only and to no more than five minutes. Proper decorum is required. Are there any citizens' comments on the agenda this evening? See none. Thank you. The consent calendar. Approval of regular session minutes from April 20th, 2015.
So moved.
Support.
Moved and supported. Any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the same. It passes. Items for individual discussion. Request approval, the American Legion to hold Memorial Day.
So moved.
Support.
Moved and supported, and that is on.
May 25th.
And lineup is at nine o'clock. The parade is at 10:00. And it's behind the stores, am I correct?
Yes.
Yep. From Superior Street to Kelm Sue River. And the American Legion at noon, they have a luncheon. So if there is no questions, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the same. Thank you. It has passed.
There's a typo in the letter they sent us. We probably should make sure that's corrected if it's going to be public. It says that the lineup is at 9:00 AM and the parade starts at 10:00 PM.
I was pretty sure that was a typo.
Well, I understand that. But if this is going to be public notice, I just want to make sure we make that correction.
Request approval for Metro Act Right-of-Way. Permit extension?
So moved.
Support.
Moved and supported.
What is it about?
Is anybody here that has any clue of what that is?
It's a renewal of their existing right-of-way relative to the technology that the fibers and things that go underground.
Okay.
So they need access through our right-of-ways. This is an extension, I think it's a five-year extension from what they already have.
I don't know if anybody got a chance to read their thing, but they don't have to pay for permits or anything else. And the last I knew, if I'm not mistaken, over on Eaton Street, there's a great big black cable hanging off of the telephone pole over there. It's been there for quite a while. If I'm not mistaken, I think that's who it is. So I don't know if they're going to come in or not and finish that or what. But I know Marshall and several other cities are involved in it, so. Yes?
Do you know, do you have, do we have any sense of how long the previous permit was?
This goes till 2020, I do believe.
Yeah, I didn't see the original. I'm assuming it goes for five years as well. I think it was referenced in some of the other documents.
Moved and supported. Any more questions? If not, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Brown.
Yes.
Kraus.
Yes.
French.
Yes.
Barnes.
Yes.
Reed. Mayor Domingo.
Yes, thank you. Request approval, mechanical amusement device for Anderson's Amusement to hold the carnival in Tractor Supplies Parking Lot, May 7th through May 10th, 2015.
So moved.
Moved and supported. Are there any questions? Yes.
This is just the annual thing that they do in the summertime where they fill the parking lot with amusements?
Yep.
Yeah. They're going to obviously have to change from where they were before because there's now an auto parts store where they used to be, so.
They'll have to move one way or the other.
Right. Is the, I know that parking lot's got an awful lot of holes and potholes. Is that of a concern?
Not with us. That's private, so.
Okay.
That's up to them.
What was that?
I said that one's not as bad as one of ours.
Right, right. Yeah, 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 yeah. No, that's ridiculous. Yeah. Okay, thank you.
There are no more questions. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Kraus.
Yes.
French.
Yes.
Barnes.
Yes.
Reed.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Mayor Domingo.
Yes, thank you. Discussion and set date to discuss applicants to file vacancy in precinct four?
Sure. That's not a motionable thing, is it? I, we just get this.
So it's going to be a voice vote.
Well, Mayor, if you recall, you wanted to bring the applicant's names forth that we had.
Yep.
As of the mail-out, we had four that submitted. I don't know if more came in on Friday. So you have the four applicants, well, four qualified applicants. And so it's your determination on if you want to have interviews scheduled as part of your regular meeting, or if you want a special session scheduled to do the interview.
Questions?
If I recall, I think we had mentioned that there were three. We'd do it during a council meeting, and then if it was more than three, we'd have a special meeting. But the only question, I think there was one, like there was a residency thing?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So technically, three.
So technically, three.
Right.
But we could do this on the 18th.
Yeah.
Let's do that.
As part of the regular meeting.
Okay. So we'll do it on 18 May at the seven o'clock council meeting?
I won't be here, but.
What?
I won't be here.
On the 18th?
On the 18th, I will not be here. And that's okay, because you'll have four council people, and you'll be able to vote.
Oh, yeah.
We'll have five votes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We'll be okay. Or you have a question?
Are you sure you don't? I mean, should we just have a special meeting?
I, I fully trust the sitting members of our council to be able to make the wise decision. I will make my recommendations known privately to our mayor and to our, so that my voice can be heard, so.
Okay, we can do that. So we will do this on 18 May at our council meeting. All in favor, whoops, I'm sorry, Cheryl, you got?
No, I'll start.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the same. Decision and approval to support letter for change to the City's Income Tax Act, Public Act 284 of 1964?
So moved.
Support.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Cheryl, how would you like to take the rule of telling anybody about that?
Well, this was the initiative of the City of Detroit and some other communities that have local income taxes. And as you know, many, many companies do not necessarily withhold the local income taxes from their employees. So one of the things that it would require is if your payroll exceeds $250,000, that you would be required to do the local withholding from all of your employees that it applies to.
I would support that. My wife works in Chelsea, and we have to sort of guess.
Yeah.
And make payments rather than to have it taken out of her income tax, so, out of her payroll check every year, so.
And I do want to mention, a part of their initiative is that you would have the choice of the local community to have the state New York collection relative to the local income taxes. Because my understanding, we didn't have a good experience when we tried that previously. But as long as it's an option and not mandatory, I'm okay with that language.
Call on us.
Yes, sir.
I was going to say, from an enforcement standpoint, it makes sense. I mean, right now, what we've been doing is usually when the finance department gets to the point where they've got multiple taxpayers for an individual or a household of individuals that become delinquent, they send it to me, and we actually prosecute them to ensure that they either get on a payment plan or, in a lot of instances, they don't even file. So that'll probably alleviate a lot of legwork from the city's end in terms of enforcement. And then, you know, if it ultimately doesn't work out, we can always fall back on that because that'll still always be a viable option to us.
Okay. Any other questions? Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember French.
Yes.
Barnes.
Yes.
Reed.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Kraus.
Yes.
Mayor Domingo.
Yes, thank you. Request approval to purchase of Holland Park Playground equipment.
So, oh, I'll let Lynn do this. I'll let you move. So moved.
Okay.
Support.
Well, we're ready, we're ready to purchase.
I haven't got a supporter.
We were trying.
You're supportive.
Support it.
All right.
Say support.
Yes.
There you go. We were trying to.
Been doing all this hard work.
I know.
We wanted to make sure you got this.
Right. This is your baby.
If there is no questions.
Oh, I have questions.
Yes.
A couple of questions. So this money is, is coming out of our, the money that's already been put into an account?
Yes.
I got a question from a couple of citizens over the weekend about seeing city workers working out at Holland Park. And citizens wanted to know, is that volunteer work hours, or is that, are we paying them out of our rec. department budget for those workers to be working out at Holland Park? Or how is that all being handled?
This was during regular work hours and.
It was on the weekend. People saw people out on a Saturday or Sunday, city workers working, using city trucks and things?
I don't remember. I don't recall that.
Okay.
But I do know there were city workers there taking the equipment out, but that was all volunteer.
Okay. That's all I wanted. I figured that's what it was. That's what I supposed was when I talked to the citizen.
But it was all their equipment. It wasn't any of the city's.
Okay.
Yes?
I'll wait till later. I'll wait till later. So, can I just have an update on how much money we have raised and how much more we have to go?
I think the $60,000 is going to pretty well wipe us out.
Okay.
And so we, we have a $250,000 budget.
Okay.
We are continuing to fund basically.
Okay.
We use 10 for continue.
Get the rest to do what we need.
Okay.
That's just for the equipment, the playground equipment, just for the playground.
Right. And so the install is gonna happen on the.
June.
June?
June the 17th.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Well, we won't know until Wednesday night exactly. I got a call from Mr. Visco, and he said that on Wednesday night when they do the final discussion, we'll find out exactly what date, but so far, it's, it's June 17th.
Okay.
Good.
Okay.
Excellent, thank you, Lynn, for getting this up, this is great.
There are no further questions. We'll go with a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Burns.
Yes.
Reed.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Kraus.
Yes.
French.
Yes.
And Mayor Domingo.
Yes, thank you. Request approval lease of two police vehicles.
So moved.
Support.
Moved and supported.
Well, Mayor and Council, as you are aware, we had an incident not too long ago in which two vehicles collided in pursuit and resulted in them both being totaled. So the insurance is based on the, the market rate, so we were able to be reimbursed, I think it's approximately $34,000 for the two vehicles. And if you recall, we had already budgeted a grant match in hopes of getting a new vehicle. So if we apply that grant match towards that, we have approximately $43,500 available towards acquisition of new vehicles. When you look at the cost of the vehicle and then the equipment, because one of the vehicles in particular is older and it really isn't worth even trying to transfer, it is just outdated, so. By the time you look at all the numbers, if we go with, I presented two options. Option one is that we acquire two new vehicles, and also we have a 2007 Chevy that needs a transmission, which will cost approximately $5,000 to repair. So if we sell that vehicle and we put in conservatively that we would get $2,500, we will still have an outstanding balance of about $24,000, which I would recommend that we spread those payments over at least two years in terms of financing. The other option is to just get one vehicle, that would mean we would have to go ahead and repair that older 2007 Chevy with the transmission. We would essentially break even, about $2,500 ahead, assuming everything comes in as quoted. So it's really up to you what you prefer. I would definitely recommend that we go ahead with the two new vehicles at this point. The cost of the upkeep of the vehicles is significant as they get older.
Sure.
I just have a question, I'm a little bit confused. Are we buying these outright, or are we leasing them?
They're a lease with the option to purchase at the end, which is nominal, if anything.
Okay, so we would be leasing them for how many years then?
I forgot the lease period, Scott. I think it was 20.
It's a lease, or Chief Scott, give, I'll be public safety, it's a lease-to-purchase over the two years, so it's not really a lease, but that's what Ford refers to it as. The intent would be to use the $34,000 or the money that we have from the insurance as a down payment this year, and then the other two payments would be over 2017, or 2016 and 2017. Um, so we're dividing it up over three years, basically, for the two cars. And I can explain a little more with this as well. My intent with this would be, the K-9 vehicle, we're gonna use one of our older Impalas and put a cage into it. I've already discussed with the K-9 officer and he's fine with that. So these two new vehicles will go straight to road patrol, which means we should be good for purchases of vehicles until 2018.
I wondered. Thank you.
Is there a reason why, because I remember a couple of years ago, we were kind of going towards the SUVs?
Yes.
So a reason why you don't want to get?
These are the Ford SUVs.
Okay.
This is what the bid is for the two Ford SUVs, just like we currently got for. We had considered going to a sedan, and with the grant money, we'd ask for a sedan. The issue I have with that is, is we have all the equipment from one of the Ford SUVs that I can transfer in to save us the money of buying that equipment, and it didn't make sense to buy one Ford and something else there, so we went with the two Ford SUVs to match up with the equipment that we already have.
Reese?
And with these two leased home, we will get the service contract of 36,000 mile, 36 months?
I actually, I'm trying to remember what I put on there, but I think it's a five-year, 120,000 mile warranty that I got for these vehicles that I added into the cost of the vehicles, so I thought it was better to go with a longer warranty with some of the maintenance problems we have with the police cars. And that we usually keep them at least that long.
Yes.
I would move that we go with option one. But I think that if we try to rotate through vehicles, a 2007 is really beyond, especially with the new transmission required. I would just say that that's probably our best long-term option, we're getting two police cars that will be paid for over three years, you say, I think that's gonna be fiscally the best way to go. We're not gonna be able to get this kind of price in two years, so I think that's, that's what I would recommend.
And we didn't get the USD grant.
No, well, we didn't get it on the first round, they said there's still a possibility that we could get it on a second round. My intent at that point would be to convince them that these purchases are part of that and to use that money for these purchases. We'd have to rewrite the grant a little bit, but I think they'd be fine with that, we did that before, so. It wouldn't be to get another car.
I'll support the motion. I'll support the motion, yeah.
Yes, sir. Reese?
Yeah, I'm gonna vote yes for this, however, I'm hearing a little ambiguous comments. Option one, can I get that in writing? All of the i's dotted and t's crossed, because in this paperwork here, it has some different elements in one clear statement. Okay, the service contract, Chief Kip just told me we're gonna get a five-year one. It's, it's not this.
Says 36,000, 36 months.
Right, uh-huh, he said we're gonna get a five-year one, so I would like to, once we get it all together, it'd be explicit on paper.
Right.
Thank you. Just, someone want that on record, that's all.
Well, excuse me, it, it's a 36 on bumper to bumper, but it's 100,000, 60-month powertrain.
Okay.
Which is where the costs come in, your transmission, any of that type of issues that we run into, that's why we're talking the $5,000 for the transmission, so.
With the equipment that's basically outdated and compatible, can we sell that stuff? I mean, like what do we?
Most of it is so outdated, you can't sell it. The K-9 kennel that's in the back of it, I'm gonna try to put out to other chiefs that may want it, but again, it's gotta fit into the older model SUV, nobody's using them anymore, or if they are, they already have that equipment, so it's very difficult to sell any of that equipment when the vehicle's eight, nine years old, so.
Out of signature Ford Lincoln, it says, two 2016 Ford police interceptor utility, is that all-wheel drive?
Correct.
In dark blue.
Correct.
Now, we're not gonna end up painting those black later?
Nope.
They're gonna stay as is.
Nope, I'd prefer to switch all of our fleet to blue if we could.
That what?
I would prefer to switch the whole fleet to blue if we could, so as we buy cars, I would prefer new vehicles.
And then, as you go across there, it only put the price of one vehicle.
Correct.
Okay? The police equipment is at $9,032. Labor is $3,400.
Right. The $9,032 is the equipment and labor for all new equipment for the one vehicle. The $34,000 is the transfer equipment from the one vehicle to the other vehicle.
What could save us a lot of time, because everybody else in their departments have to do it. Because I need to know what equipment you're taking out of the one that was wrecked, what equipment you're gonna do away with, and what equipment we're gonna buy for the new ones. They all have to itemize all of that when they wanna buy a truck and everything else. I think you should do the same thing.
I can provide that for you, I have that.
And then the next paper says quantity two for 2015 police interceptors. So are we getting 15s or 16s?
I guess it depends on the date that we get them from. Because the 16s won't come out until the summer, and I don't know when they can order them, usually there's only two times of the year you can order them, we may not have these cars until December.
Because we ended up paying a $545 under writer's fee, too, which added to that cost. That's why I say, I'm, you know, personally, you know, I know you've gotta have vehicles, but I'm not gonna rush through this. I wanna see what we're purchasing, I wanna see what we're taking out, putting back in, it just sounds like an awful lot of money. I'd like to see what equipment we're purchasing. Does anybody else comes to that, you know, and like I said, did you go through your budget and look for any money to help pay for this? Because I did, and I didn't have any problems coming up with any, but, you know, I don't run your budget, but. I just can't see, you know, we just ended up paying off a fire truck out of that fund for you. You got rid of a fire truck for some labor that we're unsure of what that was, and now you're gonna ask for this money here. I, I just can't see where that's fair to the citizens of L.A. not knowing what we're doing here, other than just buying police cars. We might have a loader go down, we might have a backhoe go down or whatever, and we're talking big dollars. And would it be fair for them to come and say, I need a new loader, just reach into the rainy day fund and give me $150,000? I think we oughta have it itemized here to see what we're purchasing. Yes?
Um, that's what I was asking for. I think it's only fair that we show the numbers, we're gonna support you, we'll get the vehicles, but we do need to see it itemized for the public.
We can bring that information to your next meeting.
Thank you very much.
As a problem at all?
No problem.
Because, you know, we do have two Hummers. They work, obviously, they were used out during the winter, but, you know, like I said, I just, I, I just think we need to have some itemized stuff here so we know exactly where we're going with the dollars.
Okay.
Pardon?
We have a motion to vote on support.
Shall we?
You have been moved and supported, am I correct?
Yes.
Okay.
I mean, so. So, but I mean, is there a consensus that people would want that information?
I don't need that information.
Pardon?
I don't need that information. If we're all in support of getting them and all we're doing is providing information, we can get that information, but it's not gonna change our decision, I don't think.
Well, we are in the discussion phase, so we, we, we're having the discussion by parliamentary rule, we've discussed it, the motion's on the floor, it's been seconded. We'll either, the mayor will either ask us to make the vote or continue discussion.
Right, this is a request of approval, so it's not.
Right.
Well, the thing is, anything over $5,000.
Right.
It's gotta be approved by us.
Right, oh, I, I hear you.
So what I'm saying is, if we're gonna go ahead and okay $70,000.
No, we're, we're.
With no.
We're, we're going ahead with $24,000.
How much?
$24,000.
That's if everything goes right.
Right. Oh, I understand that, but, but we're not gonna know if it's gonna go right, whether we have the itemized bill this week or in two weeks.
And it'll come back to us.
We're gonna get.
Well, I don't know, I guess I look at it from our finance director saying we're already gonna be $70-some thousand short this year.
Right, so the question then comes down to something more simple, which is, do you want to approve that we get two police vehicles or not? The question is yes or no. And I think whether it's, whether we have an itemized list or not, I think is not going to change our opinion of whether we think the police department needs two new vehicles as part of a replacement cycle that we approved years ago, or not. That's all I'm saying. I mean, I agree, we should have a list, but I don't think we need to delay taking a vote on whether we wanna support the police department's replacing of two vehicles based on getting those numbers, because I don't think the numbers are gonna change the decision that we make. Maybe it will, but I don't think it will.
But the problem is, is I haven't heard anybody, you know, say that they went back and looked in their budget to see what they can do to help us, as it is to just to reach into a fund and say, yeah. You know, everybody has to make sacrifices, I, you know, and we just can't keep giving this money away. We already done that at the beginning of this year, I explained that to you. Yes?
I understand that we're going off the $34,000 from the insurance company, right?
Correct.
And we're gonna be moving forward with that towards the two vehicles. And from there, if it's over that, we have to come back to the table to be approved. So I'm saying, we support it now, city manager and Chief Kip have said they'd get together and itemize it for us. If it goes over, they must come back to us before they spend the 34.
Well, the problem is, is we're going for a lease.
Yes.
This did not go through the state bid.
No, that is the state bid price on those vehicles, signature Ford is a state bid price vehicle.
See? I mean, there's just too much information left out here, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Because according to the, you know, you gotta go get bids, anything over $5,000, and we haven't done that, and I'm just gonna say, it's gonna come back and haunt somebody if we don't do this and do it correctly.
Fine. I move that we table this for two weeks, I won't be here for the vote.
Thank you. It'll be tabled. Roll call vote.
Councilmember Reed. For tabling? For tabling, yes. For two weeks? Yes.
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Kraus?
No.
French?
No.
Burns?
No.
Mayor Domingo?
Yes.
And now we're tied.
So.
Motion failed.
It failed.
So the motion fails.
We move forward, by parliamentary rules, we move forward. The motion's on the floor. It did not pass.
I guess.
I think that if we need the cars, we might as well get them now, because it's not gonna change the need for having.
That's right.
Okay, and that's not what I'm saying. I understand the need.
Might wanna get the information straightened out as to what's what, but the need for the cars still stand. The officers have to have the cars.
I, and I understand, I'm not saying that, I'm saying we're not following procedure. So the next time somebody comes in here and says, I need a $150,000 loader, you're gonna do the same process, you're not gonna ask for them to sit down and say, look, I gotta have this, this, and this.
That's right.
Okay.
I don't agree, that's a different situation.
Well, I'm just saying, you know, you're, you gotta change that in the charter, you know, the way we do things, and we have to start a new policy for doing that. I'm not trying to hold this process up, but the accident happened over a month ago.
Right.
And they should know the procedure by now, that you should've come and said, look, you know. You know, I don't think we're looking at all of our options, and, because I think if we looked at all our options, we could end up with three vehicles here, not just two. Yes?
May I ask, Colin, how does the charter read on this policy and procedure? Because my thinking is, if they came and asked for a loader, we still don't have to approve it? It's a different situation.
We're still gonna have to approve it.
I mean, I'm, Mayor, please, can I make a finish, please? Each situation is different, this is a public safety need of police vehicles, regardless, we're gonna get them, I understand where you're coming from the policy, but that's why I'm checking with the lawyer, I just wanted to make, go through the charter for sure, it may change my opinion.
Councilmember Burns, I'm looking for that right now.
Thank you.
Can you give me just a minute?
Take your time.
The way that the charter reads is that the purchasing agent, which is the city manager, shall have the power to authorize purchases of budgeted supplies, materials, services, and equipment costing $5,000 or less. All supplies, materials, services, and equipment costing more than $5,000 shall be purchased by a written purchase order or contract as authorized by the city council after due notice inviting proposals has been given by the city as provided in this division. So.
Yeah.
Inviting proposals. Is bidding.
Right.
So how many bids do we have to have?
Well, it doesn't, well, I mean, for police, it's already, the bid price is, is set by the state.
No, only if you go through the state purchase.
And he did.
That would go through, exactly, I didn't say that. Look, do what you wanna do, council.
I mean, I think, I think what we're, we're all saying is that, is the same thing, we're trying to be fiduciarily responsible, but I trust Scott Kip to find.
Now, wait a minute, Andy, I didn't say I didn't trust Scott Kip.
I didn't accuse you, I didn't accuse you.
I didn't say I didn't trust any of them.
I didn't, I didn't say you did.
We have to think a little bit, they're not the only emergency people we have here.
I, I understand.
When it comes to plowing snow and everything else, we need equipment too. But just remember, it might not be a $30,000, it might be $150,000.
Right.
And you're gonna have to come up with the money.
Right, and I think.
So, you know, I'm not saying they can't have them, don't make it sound like I'm trying to beat this thing.
I never, I never did.
Well, you have two.
No, I.
But anyway, we voted on it, we tied.
Right.
What are we gonna do?
Well, the motion to table was tied. The motion is still active, we vote.
There you go.
I just have.
So go with the motion and vote. Roll call vote on the motion to approve the vehicles.
I, I just, one last comment before vote. I'm sure, we all got our packets on Wednesday. And usually, if I see something I have a major concern with, I'll address it to. if I see something I have a major concern without, address it to the manager, or the mayor, or the department head. So I think going forward, we need to make sure that we don't wait until the meetings to try to hash out, like, number stuff. You can request numbers, so then if you don't like the numbers, then we can come here and say, "I don't like these numbers." So it relieves a lot of the back and forth at the meetings if we, if we contact the relevant department people before the meetings about this, because I'm sure this is something that, you know, if I had requested to sit down with the chief to talk about it, we could have talked about it. So I, what I'm, what I'm getting that you're saying is that you feel that there's enough extra funds in that department line budget for public safety...
Correct.
...to cover that.
Correct.
Okay. But is that something that you asked the police chief, excuse me, public safety director before the meeting? I mean, did we have, was there any discussion about that before?
No.
Okay. So we know we have this level of insurance money coming, and so...
That's the only thing right now you're assured of.
Okay, and so...
Other than the $9,500 that we already put in budget for the matching fund for the other one with the grant.
Okay, and so you're saying that you believe that the rest of that could come out of the fund, out of the budget?
Or a good, a good share of it. I mean, you've got to sit down and you have to look at things. You have to do some figuring. You just can't say, "Look, I need it. Buy it and move on your happy way." Now, that's why I say, I mean, either we listen to the finance director, what he's saying, and we try to, you know, help, you know, build what we're trying to do, or we just continue to spend, and then at the end of the year, where are we going to be?
And I guess the other question I have is with the remainder of that other, whatever's in addition or above the amount we're getting from the insurance, that's coming out of general fund?
No, what I have presented was with the anticipation that it would actually come out of the public safety fund.
Okay.
There was always the option, if you so choose, to have it come out of the general fund, but I would want it to come out of the public safety budget going forward.
Okay. Yes, Marie?
I truly respect you for the research you've done. I applaud you. I really do, sincerely. Cheryl, I need to ask you this. The mayor's option in the public safety budget, was that one of your options other than the two options you presented? I'm trying to say, you have already done the numbers, and you can get this done.
I'm not certain if I'm understanding your question.
You can get this, you can get this, this money done for this situation?
Yes, and the, and the one outstanding feature that was touched on is that the USDA rural grant is still out there as a possibility to offset some of the acquisition costs. We don't know if we're going to get that, so these are conservative numbers on a worst-case scenario. If that doesn't happen, how can we proceed? We need two operational vehicles, so no matter what, either something's going to have to get repaired, or we're going to be short of vehicles. So it doesn't make sense to put $5,000 into a vehicle that's, you know, already seven, eight years old. So that's what we're confronted with, and how we have to make those numbers work going forward. That's always a consideration and a concern, and we take it quite seriously because we, we know the overall financial situation of the city. So...
But you're, but you're saying it's coming out of the line items for public safety?
Correct.
Yeah, so what is that different from what you're saying?
They didn't show where it was coming from.
But... It's coming out of the 2016 and 2017 public safety budget.
Okay.
Correct.
Whatever we budget for the money for those years is what I'm going to have to figure out where the rest of that money comes from, and somehow it's going to come out of public safety's budget for those two years.
But somebody's going to have to come up with, what is it, the thirty-some thousand dollars or whatever?
That's the insurance money that we already have for this year. The insurance money's going to pay for this year, and then the remainder is going to come out of this public safety budget for 2016 and 2017.
Okay, but there again, like I said, we're, you know, projecting, which I don't have a problem doing, like I said, but if you would just bring me things, we're itemized and things that we're supposed to be doing. That's all I'm asking. It makes it so much easier to approve something.
Well, I'm going to take the hit for that, and in the future, now that I know you want more detail...
No.
Well, to spell out what this is...
Always spend the detail.
Well, more specifically, where the money is coming from and how we're doing it, and I'll make certain that you get that.
You know...
Part of the reason that we shared some of the information in regards to the maintenance costs, so that you could see that if we keep these aging vehicles, they cost a substantial amount of money to, in order to maintain. So what's not included in this cost-benefit analysis, if you want to call it that, is what would it cost to keep the vehicles we have and continue to maintain them? The one thing we know is the $5,000 for the transmission, but overall, there's going to be additional costs compared to new vehicles. So there is some cost savings associated with the acquisition of two vehicles, no matter what, but it's not, those figures aren't here, because I wanted to present a very conservative look at what are we really looking at, no matter what happens. So we know, you know, over the next two years, out of public safety, they're going to have to come up with basically $12,000 each year out of their budget. So we'll have to tighten up some things because I know their revenues aren't increasing based on our property taxes, and I thought that was a bit more reasonable than trying to do it all in one year. I mean, that would be a big hit. That would impact probably staff. We don't want to go there if we can avoid it. So if we can spread it out, at least we have some time and an opportunity to try to recruit those costs and cover them.
And you should be able to with new vehicles.
Yes.
The timeframe on new vehicles is what?
I do not know what this time. It depends on how fast the dealer can get them in. They said six to eight weeks initially for delivery, but then it's another probably four weeks for outfitting for each vehicle, so it could be...
So we're going to have to make do with the fleet that you have up until that point.
Right.
Okay, and like I said, I don't have a problem with that, but I'm just saying, the information is very, very important for everybody to know what they're spending the money on. We understand public safety is, you know, our mainstream.
Yes.
But we also have other departments that are working with old equipment, very old equipment.
I know.
Lawn mowers aren't cheap, you know, $10,000 to $15,000 apiece. How, how many old ones have we done? You know what I'm saying? That's what I'm saying. I just don't want everybody to think that everything that we do here is around public safety.
Well, in fifteen years working here, this is the first time I've ever been aware that we've ever totaled a patrol vehicle in a crash. I don't know that we've ever done it, so, well, and we did two at once.
I understand.
I mean, it's not something that happens every day to us, but, and I think our officers drive fairly well most of the time, so...
Didn't sound like that night.
Just circumstances.
But that's all I'm saying, is I'm not, you know, we've got to tighten someplace. We got $30,000 maintenance line. You figure the fleet, it's roughly about $2,500 a year per vehicle. That's probably cheaper than most people run their vehicles at. So, you know, there are places that we can do this. We just have to stop...
And one reason those vehicle maintenance costs stay down is when we have warranties on the vehicles, which we're getting to that area where we're going to run out of warranties, and that price starts going up. With the two new vehicles, that price should come down again because those older vehicles won't be on the road like they are right now.
My whole thing is I can walk through three feet of grass better than I can stand somebody breaking in my house, and I'm in there. So I support cars.
We'll go back, we'll go back to the original?
Original motion is to support option one.
And option one's the two vehicles and equipment?
Yes.
Plus insurance and grant, balance of $2,600, plus the $2,000. Are you sure of the $2,500 for the '07?
The $2,500 for the '07 is a conservative estimate on what the value of that vehicle is and whether we can get it or not. It doesn't have a transmission, so I can't guarantee you what we could get for it. I couldn't sell the car or get somebody to buy it until I knew what you guys wanted to do with it, so I had to guess what the value was.
Okay. The motion in the second on the floor is option one. Okay? If there is no more questions, we'll call vote, please.
Councilmember Brown?
Yes.
Kraus?
Yes.
French?
Yes.
Burns?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Mayor Domingo?
Reluctantly, yes. Okay, Austin Avenue incentive.
That's precinct one. I've been working toward rehabbing Austin Ave. 600 block since August 6th of 2012. I've contacted Debbie Stevenall. She stated, through her regional manager, Mary Junal, that there are possible resources, there's possible opportunities that are available. They're willing to come now and let us know what's possible and what's not. The target market, area survey that was taken does not include precinct one. The young lady was honest and candid with me. She stated she didn't know why it was not. I've contacted Peggy Sin in the past with the EDC, and they're willing to work with us on Austin Avenue. John Tracy has maintained his code enforcement. There has to be motivation. If I can motivate one other person, and that person can motivate others, I believe we can move forward. We have three churches in that area. They're all within a quarter mile of each other. Some council members here belong to those churches. We have some of those church members here now, but we in that community are not motivating others ourselves. During the Festival of the Forest, I would love for the pastors to have some gospel concerts up in the area. It is an eyesore. Councilman Fisk, who was here a few years back, working in industrial parks, stated the businessmen who came in wanted to come downtown to eat. Once they came through that Austin area avenue, some of the comments made, you know, brought some attention to him that we need to do something in that area. There has been some leaps and bounds. A couple buildings have been torn down. I have the July 2012 statistics from the land bank here. Right now, I think the only thing I'm concerned with is 923 Austin, the commercial gas station, the tank cleanup. That needs to be taken out. I'm in a rotary club, and the rotarians are looking to address our interests in the city around. They had me contact John Tracy, who's looking at city land now, to try to put billboards up where we can have Lions, Rotary, other service clubs who would like to be involved place their placards. It's not only Councilman Barnes who's looking at precinct one. Other people in the city too. If precinct one is failing, Albion is failing. If precinct six is failing, Albion is failing. If we're moving toward community, it must be collectively for all of us in a collaboration. I'm requesting and asking our city manager with the graces of council to look towards finding resources and opportunities that are available for the Austin Avenue area. The study from 2012 shows that, you know, vacant or tax-linked a house decreases the value of nearby homes at least 1.3%, and that's due to the poor maintenance and the making the neighborhood appear less desirable. Right now, in that block, it looks less desirable. I have to applaud the mayor. I was contacted that there was a world day of prayer. When the mayor came up to speak, he said, "You know, we'd have had a pretty nice crowd if the pastors would have shown up." I don't know if he made a statement or not. I said, "I applaud him for saying that." We need our pastors involved in our community. In my neighborhood, everything always went through the church. So we're a city entity of government. We need everyone. I applaud the president of the college. He's doing everything he can to help us be community. So therefore, I've said all this, that I want people in the city to recognize precinct one and Austin Avenue, and the demise has been there for years, but there is progress now. We have a barber shop there. We have a recreation center there. We have a beauty shop there. I'm up there all the time. You'll see my black truck parked out in front. I do that intentionally because we need to bring life, and if we as residents of precinct one do not try to bring life to Austin Avenue, other people are not going to look us in bringing life. And Cheryl, I'm hoping you can help with this endeavor. Thank you for listening. Thank you.
Just, just one second. I know that they're probably finalizing the list. There's the, I'm forgetting the name of the congregation out of Iowa that's, that's coming to the city Knox. They've probably finalized those projects, but I remember in one of the early meetings, that was Austin, I actually suggested that as one of the areas, so hopefully if they come back, well, I don't know if they'll come back next year or not, but that would have been a good opportunity to, to do some work there too.
I would add, Councilman Brown, that that, that the Ford Institute at the Albion College is organizing the projects that the Knox Presbyterian Church will be doing. So if you're interested, and Councilman Barnes, I would encourage you, if there are projects that you think owners of those properties could benefit from, that they should be in contact with the Ford Institute, because there, there is an opportunity for, you know, basic sort of maintenance, whether it be repair, or painting, or, or something like that. There's going to be 125 people coming to Albion this summer, and they're looking for projects to do that involve them meeting people and talking to people while repairs are being made. So I know, I know they want to do private homes more than they want to do commercial or parks, but, but there are some homes in that block as well that could use some rehabbing. So if there's people interested in, in having projects done, they should be in touch with the Ford Institute at Albion College, specifically Patrick McLean, who's the director of that program.
Thank you very much. One last thing there. I have to go to work. Can I be excused? I'm sorry. I just, I don't want to lose my job. However, one last statement, city manager. Can I, can me and you and I make an appointment where I can meet and we talk about Austin Avenue?
Definitely, and I just want to comment briefly, if I can have your permission. The conversations are already happening in terms of what can we do to improve all of the corridors, the major corridors for this city, particularly Austin Avenue, as we're looking at the master plan and how we want to redevelop our communities. And it's, it's very imperative that we include that as our, as we look at our comprehensive plan so that we can go for some additional funding to help support those improvements. So it's definitely on the radar, but I definitely will talk to you about that later.
I would make a motion to excuse Councilman Barnes, so he might go to work.
We don't have to, we don't have to move.
Oh, you don't? Okay.
Thank you very much. Request approval to, for Albion College to block the following intersections, period Hannah, Ingham at Michigan, Cass at Oswego, Cass at Hannah, for Saturday, May 9, 2015, 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m.
So moved, support.
Moved and supported. Any questions? I'm sure it's for commencement.
It's for commencement.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the same. Thank you. City managers update?
Thank you. First, I want to thank everyone. I want to thank everyone for participating in the series of town hall meetings. I think they were really a great success. We had great turnout in all of the precincts. A lot of information was shared. All the residents who commented said they really appreciated getting the information brought to them at their local churches, so it was really a good start to that process, and I agree, if we can shorten it, it would be a good thing. But in particular, I want to thank all of the city staff who stayed those long hours and make certain that the information was available, and they were on hand to answer the questions one-on-one. A lot of people came after the meetings in particular to ask their specific questions, so it provided some good first steps in terms of bringing the city to the people and showing that we care and that we are definitely committed to excellence in providing service. I just want to thank everyone who participated in making that possible, and the mayor who brings cookies on many days. So that was the one thing. Also, we're so excited. I shared with you, Albion Week is going to get kicked off on May 15. There's a draft of the handout. Amy Deshaun from the chamber just shared that with me today, so it is a draft. There's some minor corrections to it, but just to give you an idea of some of the things that will be going on that week, and in particular, the city will be sponsoring the Kid Safety Day program on that Saturday, May 16, at 10:00 a.m. We will be providing safety training thanks to some of the officers from our public safety department, as well as some volunteers, and we will have some helmet giveaways based on the supply that we have. Following that, we'll have our first community-wide ride going around the entire city and ending up at the French market, so that will be very exciting. There'll be lots of fun and activities and food and music, and there will be a really phenomenal raffle going on as well. There's lots of products and items from local businesses that'll be given away, so it'll be an exciting day here in Albion as we celebrate that entire week of activities. Also, on May 18, there is the... Also, on May eighteenth, there is the ride that is in coordination with MDOT, relative to identifying what are the needs that we have as a community if we want to expand our trails and our roadways relative to non-motorized travel. So we're looking forward to that, and that will be a riding meeting. So it's BYOB, Bring Your Own Bike. But we will have a couple of loaners available as well, as well as some helmets if you do not have your own. And let's see, Michigan Works Youth, you're at some of the town hall meetings, you know that we were working with them, and they're coming on board already. I believe one has started with the clerks office to help with the elections. So we're really excited to be bringing them on. There's a lot of young people here, so I will find you places to put them and make sure that, you know, they're well-equipped, but it's going to be a fun summer working with them all summer. And also, in regards to the bikes, we just found out recently that Team Active is donating a bike, so we will be raffling that off on that day as well. There's a lot of partnerships going on.
When is the deadline for the naming of the biking program?
Is that May fourth? Fifth, May fifth. We still have a moment. Some good ones are coming in, so make it a good one. And also, I just want to remind everyone that tomorrow is Election Day, May fifth. So, and we have the two local millages on for renewal, the street improvement millage, as well as the recreation millage. And as you were hearing, with the, still defining property values, it's so critical to have those resources available to us, so to vote on May fifth.
Is that all?
Well, I have one more.
I knew you could have stopped.
I want to thank everyone for all of their support. The Women's Officials Network Award presentation was really a special day and a highlight of my career, and to have my Albion family there, it really made it special. So I just want to thank everyone for being so supportive since I've been here. It really is my new home and my new family, and you can tell, I was quite proud to talk about some of the successes here. It's a small community, but we're mighty and we're strong, and, you know, we're going to go in a positive direction. And one of the things, they had a raffle there that day, a silent raffle. And I was eyeing this really beautiful purse, and there was a council member present who was also eyeing this beautiful purse.
Yeah, and she outbid me.
Doesn't sound like it was too silent to me.
Well, I had connections. I knew how to get the final bid. But I would like to present to Lynn Reed a purse.
She gets it for you all the time.
That's nice.
I'm like, no, you don't have to do that. Oh, my goodness. Thank you. I really feel bad now.
Why do you think she did it? She wasn't going to do it down there in there, she was going to do it back here.
And my last item, the Employee of the Month, you have until Friday, and this could be from the council members, mayors, city employees, citizens, to nominate someone and get those into me this Friday by four p.m.
Future agenda items? Yes?
I don't know if we need to put it on the agenda. Maybe somebody can just answer my question. We, at one point, had money that had been allocated, and I'm not sure from where anymore because it's been a few years, for wayfinding signage. Whatever happened to that?
As I recall, Mayor, correct me if I'm wrong, MDOT changed the rules in terms of what was allowed on M ninety-nine, making us putting those wayfinding signs really not helpful. So, because they have to be, what, eight or ten feet off the road? They have to be small enough?
A new person came in and changed the whole thing, so everything, I guess they did have some on order.
Right.
But we had to go back because they weren't there. We're working, I think, on the next project coming in 2018 to see what we're going to do about those signs.
Right. Yeah, because that still is.
Well, that money came from the college.
That's what I thought.
And it's all been, as far as I know, Tom, I still think we're still accountable for it, am I correct? Or was that in? Pardon? We're still accountable for that money, but I think it ran through EDC's budget, am I correct?
My concern is that we still are missing those. And coming in from down, from out on the freeway especially, finding downtown can be a little tricky. And so that still is a concern. I think we need to not put that too far on the back burner.
Right. I think we're just limited by what the state lets us do.
I know.
I missed the whole question there, but the money for the wayfinding signs, that grant was changed, and we didn't take that money for the wayfinding signs because we had such issues with the size of the sign after we were requiring it, we couldn't put them up. So, okay, I didn't know if that's what.
Yep.
Okay.
Motion to excuse nobody. Citizens comments. Persons addressing the city council shall limit their comments to no more than five minutes. Proper decorum is required. Are there any citizens' comments this evening? Please step forward with your name and your address, please.
My name is Tom Brown, the second, north.
North.
And I just, I'm at fourteen-three-three-five-twenty-nine Mile Road, Sheridan Township. But this is all my community. And this map is an example of the areas where we've already visited, just in the city of Albion. And being a Wildcat supporter, I want this to be all red. More than half of it is already. And so with the help of everybody here in the community, let's create more great neighborhoods. That's what our goal is. Great neighborhoods and a great community. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Tom. I wonder if it's got something to do with planting flowers?
Wonder what?
If it's got something to do with planting flowers?
Yes. Lucky guess. Anyway, Juanita Solis Kitter, twelve-eleven Edwards Street, Albion, Michigan, president of Citizens to Beautify Albion. And we're here as a group to, like Mr. Barnes mentioned, you know, enhancing Albion. We have been doing this for thirty years. I think it's a legacy and an honor of the Weatherfords, Mr. and Mrs. Weatherford founding this organization, grassroots organization. And we're here to invite the community to come and support us in planting these flowers. It brings beauty to our community, the, you know, the future, and the feel-good, look-good that we want for Albion. So these are some of the members that plant the flowers, weed the flowers, which is especially where we need help in the summertime, weeding flowers, watering the flowers, the men, you know. So we, we just want to invite the whole community to please come out and support us. There's a lot of activities going on on May sixteenth, but one of those, starting planting the flowers at nine o'clock in the morning. And you have another opportunity, Friday night, if you're unable to do it Saturday morning because of everything else that's going on, we start Friday night planting for a couple of hours. So everybody's welcome. Fresh air, exercise, good stuff for the community. Meet your family, your friends, everybody else. Any questions and comments?
Yes, Amy.
And where, where should volunteers meet to participate?
Thank you. We can meet at K Knight's House.
Nine-three-three West Erie.
Yep. That's where all the flowers will be. They'll be unloaded Friday afternoon. About two o'clock, we get almost three hundred flats of flowers, and they'll be at her house, ready to find a home.
Which, which streets are you going to be?
We do the main entrances of the community. We do Eden Street, Austin Avenue, Michigan, East Michigan. We have two planters on the south end of town, and I keep looking at this little spot that we might open up and have just a little strip of flowers there. We used to have them on both sides, but now since they built the bridge, you know, there's not a lot of space except for one little area that we go for a walk and we can look in at. So, one of these days. But there's two planters back there too. And we maintain twenty-three planters around town, you know, those great big wrought iron ones that, you know, we take care of. So, thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Juanita.
You do a wonderful job. Are there any more citizens' comments this evening? Come forward, please, with your name and address, please.
Phyllis Kramer, four-seventeen Darrow. I just want to reiterate your comment that tomorrow, May fifth, is Election Day, very important election. Everybody come out and vote. It's going to affect our roads, our recreation, and our education. Everybody from as old as I am down.
Thanks.
Thank you, Phyllis.
Mike Bearman, one-one-oh-one-six-twenty-nine Mile Road, county commissioner, seventh district. I'm here to say hi because I try to make it to all the meetings of all the municipalities that I have under my jurisdiction. And it's always great for me to make it into the Albion City Council meeting because it's very difficult because we have more than one meeting at the same time. Want to tell Albion College, congratulations on their lacrosse teams. That both made it to the national championship. I don't know if the city of Albion knew that we had a championship in Albion Saturday. And.
They had two.
Two?
We had MIAA track championships and MIAA lacrosse championships. We didn't come in first in the first one, but they were held here in Albion. We did in the second.
But, I mean, the city of Albion should be the first to know and the first to really congratulate Albion College and be out there supporting Albion College for these things. The other part is, I know that we were talking about the GIS system and how much it was going to cost everybody for the GIS system. Well, we voted at the county not to charge any of the municipalities anything for the GIS system. It's going to be paid sixty percent by the county and forty percent by the dispatch. So, and it will be a continuous program about every three years. And they are out there flying it right now and getting all the information that we need. So that's a very good thing, and it's holding the cost down. That's what we're trying to do, is hold the cost down for the cities and the townships and that. And as we're going through, I, I don't know if I've said in the past, I'm on the Area Agency on Aging, and we're doing a lot to help out the community also. And they just voted twenty thousand dollars. Up to twenty thousand dollars for a full-time director at the Senior Forks, so Fork Senior.
Fork Senior Center.
And we're, we're really trying to get that up farther and farther all the time because it's for the whole community. It's not just for the city of Albion, but it's for the whole east side of the county too. And we've got people that are members there from all over around Albion, like, like you was showing, the map is red. Yes, that's what we're trying to do. We're trying to put a lot of new programming in that. I'm going up on Thursday and Friday, and I'll be going through conferences for the Area Agency on Aging, getting educated on more of this stuff. So these are things that we're trying to do as the county and trying to help out and make it so everybody's working together. And I still have to say, my hat's off to Cheryl for going to Albion Township and addressing Albion Township. We have to be doing this. We've got to get Albion Township addressing the city council. We have to get Sheridan Township involved too. These are things that we have to be doing, working as total community for the whole east side of the county, not just for one little area or another little area, but we have to be working together. And then my last thing is the schools. I have to say, really thank you for all that have worked on the Albion Fellows, because that is tremendous. I don't know why the kids aren't beaten down the doors of the schools to get in. With Albion Fellows and being able to go to Albion College free of charge, if you attend the school and live in our district, and to be able to be in one of the top twenty-one schools in the state of Michigan, and to be able to have all of the tremendous programs that we have up there.
Hey, Will.
People have, people have to start understanding how great this education system is in this town, all the way from elementary school to high school to college. So, thank you.
I'm Barbara Frederick, and I, like Mike Commissioner Bearman has already said, I sit on the Area Office on Aging, and I sit on the board that makes the decisions for any money that we're going to spend. And the Forks Center contacted our director, Carla, Fails, for some help because, as you know, that they no longer have a director over there, and they have an interim director, Tom Hunsthorfer, that will be leaving that position the thirty-first of May. Funny, he wants to go to one of his kid's weddings. No, I don't understand that, but he's been doing a great job. And so the Forks Center really needs some financial help. I want everybody to know, since this was brought up, I want them to know that Albion will still have the control over the Forks Center, that our money that's going in is only to help them maintain. So we did vote to finance the director up to twenty thousand. There will be some more money that will come later, but that will, things have to go in stages when it's the Area Office on Aging and you're dealing with state and federal money. And so that will be done in an annual report that Carla will have to provide in the next month or so. But we're happy to help the Forks Center, and we have been doing that on a consistent basis. So Mike sits on the advisory committee, and we have one other Albion person that's on the advisory committee. And so we have worked very diligently with the Forks Center. So I just want you to know that, you know, we're happy to do that, but we know that the control is still going to stay in Albion, and that is our goal.
Thank you.
Need an address from you, Barb, please.
One-six-seven-eight-one-twenty-six Mile Road, Sheridan Township.
Thank you. Any more citizens' comments? If not, I'll ask the council for a German.
So moved.
Support.
Moved and supported. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the same. Thank you all very much. Have a good evening.
And it's not too late, everyone. There's still blues at the bone up until ten o'clock.